Okay, thank you so much. Welcome this evening to the February 21st, 2023 Angels Camp City Council Meeting. Rose, roll call please.
Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Vice Mayor Malkata.
Present.
Councilmember Tuscornia.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio is absent. Councilmember Sharada.
Present.
And staff is present.
Thank you. Item number two, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, report out of closed session. A direction was given to staff for item A and item B was continued to the next meeting. Number four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
We just want to move regular agenda item C to the first item for regular agenda. Just let us have.
Do C first?
Just do C first.
Sixteen, that's it.
That's seven.
Seven.
Okay, we can do that. Anybody else have any changes or recommendations? Okay, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to the city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any public comment? Seeing them here in the room, anything online, Rose?
No.
Okay, I see no public comment. Moving on to item six, consent agenda. Looks like we have A through G on consent. Anybody have any items of concern that they need to pull or discuss on consent? Okay, I've seen them here. Do any members of the public have any items of concern or discussion on consent? Anything? Okay, bringing it back. We will look for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Caroline?
All second.
Isabel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, regular agenda item seven, we are going to do item C first, which is B. We're looking at adopting the City of Angels strategic plan and approving the resolution 2317, Rebecca.
Okay, so this has been something that we discussed and contemplated and finally went through all of the exercises in order to get us to this point. We received the draft strategic planning and facilitation document from Citygate. It was on the last meeting, which was tabled and then brought back to this meeting. That way, council and the public had additional time to read through everything. This was one of the first items that council gave me to decide if we should move forward or if we should do something different. And one year later, I am really excited that we have the ability to kind of unveil this plan and work on it and start building our direction going forward. Citygate is available here, so they have their presentation they'll be going over as well. Not spending so much time on the actual plan itself because we spent a very long day together pulling all that information together and making sure that everybody's priorities were documented and identified. Pulling together a vision statement, a mission statement, identifying our primary guiding priorities, and then ultimately our values. So, a lot of their presentation is going to be on, okay, so if we do this, then what? I figured that's probably going to be most of your questions. So, you have this plan, but how do we get from point A to point B? How do we make sure that there's accountability? How do we make sure that we're going to see progress in line with all of these great accomplishments that we just presented in the document? So, with that said, I will let Citygate go ahead and jump on that one. I also drafted an executive memo to kind of documenting what we're currently doing in terms of being able to facilitate that. So, meetings that we're going to be having at the staff level, ways that we're going to utilize technology and we're going to track all of this information and make sure that we're moving ahead in operating a little budget policy recommendations to consult and how we would do.
Okay. You ready, Stacy?
I think I'm going to take charge of the objective right here on the power props up. I think we'll get started.
Can you not see the PowerPoint right now?
You're sharing, so you're red screen. Oh, you're on the wrong screen. Very good.
So, should I bring it up and then share my screen?
Um... No.
No, here, hold on, let me try some.
Okay.
Do you stop sharing and then share? Share this one? Share the one, do you have the PowerPoint up?
Yeah, I'm trying here, see it?
But it's not in the... Yeah, you're on there, well, with the red screen. So, I'll worry about... I'm going to exit. That's what I got stuck on with doing a little bit ago. Oh. I'll think you're sharing right now.
Sure.
Hold on, ten.
No, bro.
He might look like he's recording and sharing his screen. He might feel very good.
Andy, why don't you try and see if you can share it? We'll play. Uh... Go ahead and try.
So then, let's see. But he's only going to choose. He must be able to, Zion actually invited him to the meeting?
Okay.
So...
Should we bring it up and then we try it?
Okay.
Can you see that at all?
No.
Are your security... So, hold here, let me try from here. And then this one, right? Well, hold on, I gave you options.
Can you see that one?
Yeah.
No?
Go back to... What do you mean? It's a very close app. And then click it, so I should not do that event. Are they here?
I don't know if you can actually find it to the right person.
I remember three seconds.
I just kind of looked up and maybe joined.
Sounds good. You're going to be a part of another club. Join our wishes because you're sharing that screen right now.
That sounds fantastic.
And then it should allow us, no?
It's long past time that you've been right on all intents and purposes of special interest if you're losing control of power over here.
Where is your... The PowerPoint, the PowerPoint? It should be on one of the... Something is getting shared already. See it?
Yeah, it's basically...
Well, we won't...
I said eight sixteen, any trees.
It's real. Click it to see where it says right in top.
The window four?
Then at least six or eight of them are covered. Top notch, rushing to the end, maybe twelve. Or maybe I'll just kind of do those in there. Get like...
There was one that checked out, the closest one. It sounds like it's the closest one. The... Eight hundred and seventy. Hold on. Why was it when you click on browse, like in your...
This is the old one.
When we click what?
Right there, where it says browse, when you click on your computer.
Well, see browse. Is this right? And see how it's... Well, I know, yeah. But she made it, right? You know, but now it's going to be shares there for one. Which is right. Well, you have it up there.
Right.
No, they can't see it.
No, I know, so it can't be just through there?
Oh, do that. Oh, okay. That's, oh, that's being treated as like an alternate screen.
Right.
So, shares there, right there. There we go.
And there you go.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not looking. Yep, no problem. And I was like, it says share right there. You did that as an extension of your display, didn't you?
Yeah.
So, that's why.
All right, let's do this.
Okay, there we go. Can you turn it on? We need to... Hold on a second, Andy. So, it's there? We need, that's it, but we need to get the volume. The volume is up. I'm not sure if it's going to do it on the TV.
Okay, can you say something, Andy?
Sure. Testing, testing.
You just choose the way that you want the sound to come out of it. Go to the little carrot at the microphone.
Try again.
Try again.
Okay, try again. Can you hear me?
Yeah. No, we got it. It's just very quiet. Okay, try again.
Okay, let's try it now. Can you hear me?
That's better. Yep, that's better.
And then they'll just... Did you enable that people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's hard.
Okay, go ahead, Andy.
Okay, thanks a lot. So, Rebecca, thank you and the council for allowing us to present the results of the strategic planning workshop that we had back in December. I have Stacy, Bristol, and myself. I'm putting for the record Andy Green with Citygate. It was a pleasure for us to put this thing together and like I said, to present this team tonight. But quickly, presentation itself, as Rebecca pointed out, won't go into a lot of the details of the report. It's going to primarily focus on the recommendations and specifically this treaty plan document that was developed. So, just by looking at the next slide, just by way of talking about the project path, some of these are the paths that we've used to complete the project. We completed a review of several documents throughout the city to get a better understanding of the overall operation of the city at this particular point in time. We conducted interviews of the mayor, council, city manager, city administrator, and the department heads. We summarized and developed a community and staff, community and staff surveys, also to assist in identifying the general objectives and goals and priorities of the community and of the city employees. We also completed a very high-level review of the city's current fiscal condition, just to get an idea if there were any financial, major financial constraints, and putting together the strategic plan. We completed, as Rebecca pointed out, a full day, and as I'm sure the council remembers, it was a very full day of onsite workshop to where we helped the assistant, the council, in putting together some of the key components of the treaty plan, as Rebecca had mentioned, that we'll talk about a little bit on the next slide. And then we're providing the assistance to actually develop a strategic plan document. That was pretty much the task that we have accomplished with this. So, based upon the workshop, here are some of the outcomes, the key outcomes. As far as the vision statement, the council developed dedicated to preserving our rich history, providing a safe and thriving community that is devoted to families, businesses, and visitors. Your mission statement that you came up with is to provide municipal services, infrastructure, and a high quality of life through trusted leadership, accountability, and efficiency for the benefit of our community. And as far as your major guiding, primary guiding priorities, you determine fiscal stability, economic development, technology, infrastructure, and public safety were your primary guiding priorities. And your core values that you came up with was efficiency, accountability, or resiliency, proactivity, trust, and innovation. And as a result of the strategic planning exercise that you went through, the determination was made to use your general plan objectives that you, goals and objectives that you've already identified, you went through a very extensive process in putting together your general plan. And so, what we did is zero in as far as using the sixty-four or so goals and objectives that your general plan identified and use those as a base to develop the top or the first year of planning objectives that you would want to focus on, in putting together your strategic plan this first year. And the council identified twenty of those plans that they would like to see developed in the first year of the plan. And go to the next slide, please. Okay, and before I go through the recommendations, which we came up with seven of them, what I would like to do is just to open it up real quickly with the council for any comments or provisions to the strategic planning workshop that I just identified. Any misstatements that are corrections that are needed, your vision, mission, primary priorities, or core goals that, excuse me, core values that we ran off? I want to make sure that those are all correct.
Yeah, I had one. You don't like the vision? No, I love the vision. I think there's a word missing. You remember that book? Well, no, but it just reads, I don't know, maybe... Are you on the vision? Among the findings is dedicated to preserving our rich history, comma, providing a safe and thriving community that is devoted to families. I just feel like there should be an "and" in there. Maybe that's not... An "and," the word "and"? Yeah. Dedicated to preserving our rich history and providing a safe and thriving community that is devoted to families. But that was just, I thought it read weird. That was just me. But if it's not grammatically correct, then I'm not grammatically correct and that is not unusual. I have to say, I agree. So, you wanted to say dedicated to preserving our rich history and providing a safe and thriving community? Because we are dedicated to providing a safe and thriving community as well as preserving our rich history. You guys ran it through your team, right, Andy? And is your grammar correct thing?
We did, but yeah, this is for you to say this is going to be your business statement, so however you want to do it, if you wanted to add that, again, we just want to give the opportunity.
Dedicated to preserving our rich history, and providing a safe and thriving community.
That is satisfactory for what you recall.
Try popping it over.
Okay.
I think it's fine without the "and," but that's just me.
And I think I like it better with the "and" because it can, it just kind of... Yeah, I stood up to you when I was reading this fresh and I thought, oh, that just seems like it needs it. But I love throwing extra words into things too, so that's my vibe issue. I just think it reads complete, like it's more of a complete sentence.
Yeah, I kind of like added a "and."
So, I think the direction is to add the word "and" after "history" and remove the comma. Got that, Andy?
I got it.
Okay, that's all, so then we're back to here then.
Okay.
Do you want to go on?
Yeah, as I pointed out, we have developed seven recommendations. The first one that we identified, and the next five actually, recommendations I'm going to go through, all these next five slides are identified on pages six through thirteen of the report. And I thought that it would be good to have each particular recommendation has its had us all slide. I'll do the first five particular recommendations because they have more to do with policies and fiscal kind of side, the numbers per se, but just operations of the finance department. And then I'll turn it over to Stacy to zero in on this strategic planning recommendations, which are numbers six and seven. So, with this first one, what we're looking at or recommending is to increase the resources in the finance department. I know that in looking at the documents and talking with staff, that there have been some, a lot of turnover there in the finance department in particular, which has led to some tardiness as far as getting the financial reports and the like. And getting the financial information both accurately and timely is a crucial component of overall operations. And so, what we're recommending is that whatever of those resources needed for the finance department to basically improve their overall timeliness of those reports is one of our key recommendations. Now, one of the things that we did not do particularly is go through and say you should add a body or two bodies or whatever else, because since your finance director is so new there and Rebecca's relatively new there, the thought was to just reinforce our recommendation that increase the resources as needed. So, as Rebecca and Michelle kind of work together and develop things and the like, Citygate and Stanley, we basically would support whatever increases in those resources that are needed for the finance department. Okay, so, next slide. Recommendation number two, to actually formalize the fiscal policies based upon GFOA, Government Finance Office Association, recommended format. And we actually included in the report under appendix E a sample of what the policies should contain and what they should look like. GFOA, or the City of Angels Camp, has a few and far between type of formal policy. You have, you have some, have a reserve policy that you developed based upon our first review of Angels Camp. But you need to formalize, and what we're recommending, that you formalize those fiscal policies to provide a more consistent application of operations, fiscal operations within the city. And it is a best practice, and like I said, we included an example of what a best practice format would be for those particular policies in the report. Next slide. Another general overall operation component that we are recommending is to actively develop a set of accounting manual procedures, written documented procedures. This primarily is for the financial department, again, to provide consistency to make sure that they're operating and putting things together, accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll, those types of things consistently throughout the city. And then finance department can basically have whatever turnover that they may have, but they'll have a set of written procedures to make sure that the accounting remains. Okay, next slide. What we're also recommending is that the city, to start to use, if you're not already using, from my understanding, that hasn't been used, a five-year financial planning model to help maintain a longer-term focus on your fiscal ideas and fiscal policies, or not policies, but fiscal planning that you're going to be doing. Well, best practice is a five-year financial forecast model. We did provide one when we first did our review of Angels Camp back in, I believe, was 2018. And so, what we would recommend, we noticed that when we did our review, that that wasn't at least readily available, and I'm assuming that's because of the turnover primarily in the finance department. But we resubmitted that to Rebecca, she has that now, and what we were recommending here with this particular, number four, is that that be utilized to help the industry before maintain a longer-term focus on fiscal planning. Next slide. Thus, recommendation number five is develop department performance measures. Now, doing as your treaty plan is great, you've got to put together your mission, values, your objectives, and what you hope to accomplish, but one of the key components, as Stacy will go over this, starts implementation plan, is also making sure that individual departments have performance measures so that you can monitor what's going on and how they're meeting the goals and objectives that the council has set aside or has created for the strategic plan. And so, typically the case, what would be best practice to have each department identify a set of performance measures that would basically allow the department operational function to basically be monitored as it relates to strategic planning objectives that have been identified. We also included in the report directly a link to the GFOA website that basically lays out what those performance measures should look like, what they consist of, how you would go about developing those that would be more, most useful as far as the departments are concerned and the city is concerned. And that link, information is also included in the report. One thing I wanted to, again, point out is that as developing, as departments developing these particular measures, they should be mindful, very mindful, and should be driven by the values, mission, vision, and the priorities established by the city through their strategic plan. All right, and next slide, I'll turn it over to Stacy.
Oh, thank you. First, I wanted to say thanks to council and staff for this planning day. It was a long day with a lot of work and it was a lot of great creativity and positive energy and really awesome collaboration. We don't always get to see that during those sessions, but it was exceptional. And so, it was great to be a part of that and thank you for all of us, because this helps the project move forward so much better. So, with that recommendation thing, the implementation plan is important as having a strategic planning implementation is almost more important because once you have a plan, it's like now was, to Andy's point earlier. And so, understanding the importance of how to monitor, not just monitoring, but how to monitor, how to measure the monitoring, how often it should be reported, what we're reporting, updating the process to make sure that the document is relevant, because there will be times where they will be necessary to pivot or step back and say, this is working, this isn't working, or what do we need to adjust? How do we need to adjust? How do we need to adjust? And what that looks like, and being able to ask those questions, and understand that. One of the ways could be to establish a work group, it could be a task force, it could be a team, it could be one person. It could include people in the community who could not. But monitoring a strategic plan helps people with accountability. So when you have a team, teams are often helpful because they can help each other, bounce ideas off each other, support each other, keep people, each other on track. So something to think about what that looks like. Typically falls to the department head, but doesn't always have to. So there's lots of options there. And I know your city manager has been thinking about this and have a variety of different ideas. And that might evolve and change too. So you might start off one way, decide to add to the team or change the team as well. So you know, open this to some of those things. And then also to develop results and update the reporting schedule. You'll have to look at timelines. I know a lot of this is obviously tied to budgets, but there'll be other things and time sensitivities as far as how often it's reported, to whom it's reported to, and then what actually is reported out to the community, the staff, et cetera. So with that, next slide please. Thank you. Um, three, the tasks, Andy mentioned that the tasks are really important. This is where, so the rubber meets the road. This is the nitty-gritty of what are the one, two, three, five, ten tasks that are required to meet the objective. This is the opportunity for diversity in the team to collaborate, figure out like, what is the best approach to meet this objective? How do we do that? What is the fiscal impact of that? Or do we need more resources? Do we not? How do we get them? A lot of questions come up. So this is another brainstorming opportunity to figure out, you know, what those four tasks are going to be and how long each of these tasks will take. Also identify how the personnel that goes along with each of these tasks, because you know, it's not a respite. Well, there's going to be support for that. So it's also taking a look at that. Performance indicators and accountability metrics. The reporting out is one way to have accountability metrics. There's a lot of other ways to have accountability metrics. Those can be things where there's public accountability, there's private accountability, it can be done for performance evaluations. So there's a lot of different things that I know the city managers are thinking about, and how to approach that. I'm also a huge fan, as you know, of like Bill Paxton, the myth. You remember those myths where things like no communication equals understanding, and that's not always the case. So having both of those nearby for not just the staff and their awareness to what these are and communicating these with them, but the city manager and council, because there will be hiccups and challenges, and those hell facts are real. You know, there's science behind that. So just having patience and grace and understanding that, you know, there's going to be some hiccups with it, and that's okay. It's just, you know, working through those processes together. And I'm also a huge fan of recognizing achievements. I think, you know, we get so down in the mud so often, we forget to think, hey, wait, great job, you know, you did awesome. And from what I hear, your city manager does a lot of these great things. I think there was a special event even over the holidays. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity here to recognize that, and it helps with the buy-in and the motivation and inspiration for staff to continue to work on all of these tasks and objectives. So big supporter. Next slide please. I believe your city manager has already developed some quick reference sheet to help people get the staff on track. And again, we like to reiterate, there should be really, really thoughtful alignment as you're doing things to the mission, vision, values, and priorities. It's easily said, but often we can get astray when other things come up, or other projects or other things can take away. And sometimes that moment in time where we get the sort of step back and ask, does this align with our vision? Or are we off track here? I know we want to do this new project. Does this meet our values? Is this part of our mission truly? And if it's not, then maybe we don't do this. So it's sort of taking those opportunities and looking at those things. And the next one was the city determine its own style. Every agency has its own way of monitoring and reporting and communicating and understanding, you know, the culture within the organization. And you've got a lot of new blood, which is awesome. And being able to have the opportunity to figure out, you know, what is our style? You know, what is the culture? How do we want to communicate? And that sets the tempo for, you know, future plans, whether it's general plan amendments, updating general plans, other strategic plans, or what else comes forward. But this will set the tone going forward. So that's something good to keep in mind. And next slide. And my recommendation, this is your report. This is the reports that is the little piece of Chris did here. Revise it, edit it, you know, challenge it, ask questions for it as often as you need to. And this will eventually come into the creation of your formal strategic plan documents. And it will be exciting to see how you will move forward with implementation. And I know that you have, I believe, your city manager just mentioned that she did an executive letter to the council about some of these items. So I think starting there with that conversation is a great idea. And thank you for that. And I will, next slide, pass it back to Andy, and we can get into some questions.
Great. Thank you, Stacy. We appreciate it. So at this particular point in time, we'll open it up for any general questions that back on the report, or some of our presentation, any of our presentation but things that were not quite clear. But I'll turn it back over to Rebecca, you and the council.
So just some things that, you know, we're working on in the background is, so one of the technologies that we used when, started using when it first came on was smart sheet. So we created two sheets, one that identifies all the recommendations and starts working to assign who the lead is on each one of those recommendations and what their particular tasks are going to be with each one of those. And then the other one is the priority goals and objectives. So we've got every single fiscal year, so five, and within each one of those is tier one, tier two, tier three. And within each one of those is the particular general plan element as well as the priority goal and objective. So we are going to be start, we're going to start meeting as a group to identify, you know, kind of just starting with FY '23. So starting, you know, when we look at the '23, '24 fiscal year, you know, these are the tier ones. You'll look at tier two, tier three. But what are the tasks associated with each one of these in terms of either they're projects that are already currently in the works, or they're projects that are out on the horizon? They could be grants that we're going to start looking at, policy development that we would want to bring to the planning commission and for city council. You know, and so we're going to start really working as a group through that. And then within each one of these, we'll have additional dropdowns. So those tasks will then be identified in terms of when's it going to start, when's it going to be due, so we can keep track of that, who the lead contact is going to be, identifying if there's any fiscal impacts versus just resource impacts. I think one of the concerns staff have, and that's not just here, anywhere, when you start putting all this together and you say, okay, here are a lot of things, what we're going to do, what staff here is, okay, great, now I have my job, and now you're going to dump all this stuff on me.
Right.
And that's really not what it is. It's really identifying that, yes, you have all these things that you're currently doing. How do those things fit within this?
Totally correct.
Or maybe we need to take certain tasks off your plate because they don't really apply anymore. And we need to replace them with something that's more aligned with these objectives. So we'll be working, we were going to meet this week, and I think all of my departments are going to be really busy to make something else.
Oh, yeah.
Dealing with snow weather. So we'll, we'll put a pin in that for this week, and then we'll start meeting next week. But, and then in terms of, you know, the, the financial resources recommendation, one of the first pieces that I knew I needed to do was create the finance director position. And then the second thing that we needed to do was we needed to upgrade our financial system. So those two things have happened. So, you know, kind of behind the scenes, other things that we're doing, we're scheduling business reviews with Springbrook. It's very easy, it's not just you upgrade your system and then like, there, it's ready to go. You upgrade your system in order to open up other options and opportunities. But that means that we have to review our existing process and how we work within the system and work with Springbrook to identify different ways to use the system that now we have, that we didn't have before we upgraded. So those are going to be things that are going to help us decentralize the financial system so departments can actually have access to their own financial information, utilizing workflow. So we can do purchase recs to purchase orders, working on, working at how we process utility billing, how we deal with payroll, how we deal with HR information. But in order to get there, we had to upgrade the system. So there's a lot of things that are happening in the background right now. We're completely aware that there's, I am like, policies all over the place, but a lot of them were not formally adopted by council. So, and actually, this just came up in a conversation I had somewhere else. And he had the same idea that I did, which is, we're not going to go through and try to like, do an archaeological dig on the ones that we find to determine if in fact they had ever been adopted by council. We're just going to assume they probably worked, and we're going to write the appropriate policies. And then you just have a catch-all on the resolution that says, anything that's standing out there is null and void once you approve this resolution. So those policies will be developed using GFOA standards and best practices. And yeah, it's, 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 it's a lot, because you've got your fiscal policies, you've got your payroll policies, your personnel policies, and they all need a lot of help. So we're going to just be working through them as we, as we can. But definitely, I'm completely aware that has, that's a problem. Yeah. Anyway, and then on the accounting manual, same thing. It's just, people get in the habit, they, you know, they jot their notes down. But that is not really helpful when they, they leave and you have turnover. So really, I've been working with Michelle on identifying, Rose on identifying true documentation, where we have it available, we can use it for training, keeping it updated. That way, it just makes training a whole lot easier. So, so that's all happening. I had talked to City Gate also on the five-year financial forecast. That is something that we want to start looking at in terms of this budget development cycle. It's really hard when we bring a request to council, because I can see the angst when you're like, well, what's going to happen next year? Because you can't really see what's happening next year. So if we have a more long-range plan, you kind of already know what's going to happen for next year. So it can kind of tamp down some of that concern, because, you know, we, we may have, you know, revenue projections that are higher or expenditure projections that are lower, that's, it's going to be fine. So looking at that on a longer-term process is a lot easier to plan for and spread those, those needs out. And then we are going to use the template that they have recommended in terms of performance measures. We need to have conversations with each department in terms of when we get to those tasks associated with the priority goals and objectives. What are the correct metrics? It's going to be different for police versus public works versus fire versus building and planning. So depending on what the respective task is, it might cover multiple departments, but they're all going to have their own metrics associated with their part of that task. So, and then it's just a matter of working through with them, because I don't want to dictate to them, I want you to use this metric. That may not work for them. And it may be really difficult for them to obtain that or track that or get there. So really, it's a matter of trying to find how can they build that success in this process. So we'll be working through what makes sense with the tools that they have. And then in terms of report outcomes, we had kind of talked about it generally, how frequently you wanted to get updates. I think, you know, we do mid-year, so that might be a really great time to kind of do mid-year and also an update on where we're at with regards to the goals and objectives. I don't know if you want it more frequently than that, but I would say a lot of these will span an entire fiscal year or even multiple fiscal years. So I'd hate to offer, we'll give you a monthly update because during, we haven't done anything. And we've done plenty, but it's just, it takes, it takes time to get through all of these. But I think on a, you know, a mid-year basis, and then, you know, as part of the initial budget discussion, so that initial discussion in June in terms of those hearings and why we want to incorporate these various tasks within the budget is a great discussion at that point. And then, and then having that discussion at mid-year in terms of where, where we've gone. That's my two cents, but it's your council, so you can decide how frequently you want it. And then, yeah, creating the work, work group, pretty much, I think for right now, we're going to keep it at the department head level. That can always change. You know, you may eventually say, well, we want, you know, one person from council included in those discussions. Or you may say, you know, for these particular objectives, we want someone from the public on those particular ones. For right now, my recommendation is to keep it at the department head level so we can work through all of this. And then we may ourselves come back to you and say, we want to incorporate, you know, someone from the public, or we would like someone from council to chime in on these various, you know, components. But we just want to kind of sit down, go through everything and figure out, you know, where we're at. And then on the quick reference sheets, so my recommendation is that we create a section on the website that's dedicated to our strategic planning. We want to create a QR code that has all of that information, create cards that can be handed out that would have that QR information that staff can have or the public can have, or you can pass them out. And then I've been using, so Caltrans uses Constant Contact, I know Aqua has used Constant Contact. It's, it's probably one of the best, most widely used contact solutions. You can, people can sign up for the newsletters that way, or, or, you know, if they want to, you know, get various, you know, just instead of us having email stuff, they can basically, and they can opt out too. And they can opt out. So that would be my recommendation. It's really inexpensive, like super, super inexpensive. And we have also kind of talked about doing some sort of a newsletter or something like that anyway. And then if you recall from the surveys, it's, it's kind of all over the place. Some, some people want to get information via email, some people only want to get it on the website, some people want to get a printed newsletter. Printed newsletters are really, really expensive. So there's so many other things I think we can spend our limited dollars on, that's probably not one of them. But certainly, I think being able to subscribe, they can pull it up on their phone or their computer or whatever. And then we can also have that information on our website.
Right. You had a couple of ladies come up to you.
Yes.
That wants to email them. I think that they opt into a newsletter.
They would, yes, but we want to refrain from creating.
But they missed the emails that go out.
So that's, that's what we're doing. So we've done kind of a lot of behind-the-scenes work just in terms of establishing upfront work for all of this. And then we will start meeting and start going. But I didn't want to print anything or behind you until you absolutely made sure your hands are bust or whatever.
In the grammars of the state.
I'm all right.
I mean, you know.
Yes, but definitely, you know. Um, yes, but definitely, you know, that, that is.
Oh, I, yeah, I noticed that you were putting that on there. And my um, I just had a suggestion was to maybe also put the vision and mission on our agenda so that the public would make.
Yes.
They would see this one, but they would also have the other one. And it just gets us used to seeing it. When I read the agenda, then I'll read that and then I'll go into my agenda. I think also that's, is a reminder problem.
I think that's a very good agenda. Um, it's almost like an affirmation.
It is.
And so if you're always seeing it, you're always putting your comments in that vein. You're always putting your recommendations in that vein because you always want to go back to that. What do we stand for? Why are we here? And that's important. So, thank you. We will definitely do that. Um, and that's all I got. I'm super excited um to have you raise, adopt this and start meeting and start working on all of these things. And um, some of them, like I said, we are doing already. Um, but uh, yeah. I will say, as I was going through the fiscal years and kind of laying everything out, um, we may want, we may want to have a conversation about 2425 because yeah, you put a lot of stuff uh in tier one.
In 2425?
In 2425.
It would be great to see.
You put nothing, all of nothing in tier one or tier 23.
2526.
Oh. Uh, or.
Were we easy on you for the, for the rest of this year?
The rest of this year is, is not too bad, see?
But I would. Wow. So can we get a printout of all of those things and what tiers they were? Cause we're only getting like the top few here. So for me visually, you're, I wouldn't have known that had you not brought it. Right. I think it would be good to revisit that and say, okay, what are our priorities for 2526? And then make some adjustments for you.
And then what will, what will the public see? I mean, they, this is all gibberish, not gibberish, but it's all Latin. Yeah, it's completely foreign. So they're not, if somebody says, hey, what's ever going to happen with whatever?
So that's where.
The message would need to be.
Yes. So the message is going to be um, we will either, you know, we address that, I can look at it and say, that's something that we have uh decided we're going to wait until 2526 or whatever it is. Um, for other things that are currently happening, it will be able, it'll be nice because we will have projects or tasks underneath each one of these priority goals and objectives that we can just point to and say, this is included in, you know, our priorities for this year.
Uh, this was an example of something that happened with me the other day. Somebody reached out to me with a concern and like, you know, saying, would this ever happen? Or when's this ever going to happen in the city? And should I call the state or should I, you know, who should I call? I checked for Rebecca and it's actually already going to be identified or has been identified. And it's slotted to be rectified in next year.
Yeah.
It won't be this year, but it's part of the current project. So had she not had access to that. And then whenever I got back to the individual and I was like, hey, good news. You don't have to go, you know, running up the, the powers that be. We have this already being handled and the answer was all that they needed. They didn't need, you know, what month or, you know, they just needed to know that it was, we weren't fluffing them off or putting it under the carpet. So those types of, that's kind of, I think if we, not that I could have answered that without having reached out to you, but that's what the public will need to know. Um, and then it's not Latin to them anymore. It's tangible.
Yeah. And as long as we have a project identified, um, then a lot of times we can uh, we can point to that particular project. And it's just like on that particular one, it was a matter of making a couple of phone calls.
Yes.
We have other issues that uh, that public has brought forward, such as the lighting downtown and the crosswalks downtown. Those are not, those are currently slated on any project, but we do have projects in the works. So it was a matter of making some phone calls and doing some outreach. And so it sounds like we might be able to get part of that addressed within an existing project.
Yeah.
But had we not made that call, we wouldn't have known. So, but we wouldn't have reached out to them because our thought was you're only going to Utica. So anything past Utica is really not going to happen. And um, and so now it sounds like maybe we can get some of those issues addressed as part of that shop project. Um, but you know, this also goes into make sure as the public, it's vital that you contact us. Go into our, our portal and, you know, make your gripe or give us your recommendation on what you want to see. Because we do really truly want to hear that. And those, those various things that get sent to us, if we can make it happen, we will make it happen.
And if the public's fear is that their concerns are going to fall on deaf ears, that they're literally just going to get lost in translation or lost. And so we need to make sure we take advantage of each and every one of them.
So the nice part with the portal, it stays there.
Good.
It doesn't go away. And so it stays there like flashiness in the face until we do something.
To do that.
Until we address it. And so as opposed to if it gets written on a post-it note or.
Like you could ask.
I don't know. And so it's, those are really important. And generally, if someone calls uh me or talks to me, I, I immediately try to go on and actually enter it into the portal just so that we have a record of it.
Okay.
So it's, it's really, it's a great avenue to put information in.
So you're going to start meeting with department heads monthly, obviously. And then um, you say that they already will have access to their specific um budget numbers or that's in the.
That's in the near future.
So that's going to make budget much, much easier. They're going to see live and actuals and things like that. They're going to, they're going to have a first hand on experience with their own budget this time around.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So I think we uh, no, when Springbrook.
Oh, with Springbrook, yeah.
I, it's this week.
It's this week.
Uh huh. Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine. Um, yeah, so I've been pushing that. So that, once we get that, then we can, you know, set up the security and get that going and get some training can. Um, so, and that's been something that they've wanted for a really long time. And it makes sense and it makes it a lot easier for us um if they have that information.
Great.
Thursday and Friday.
Oh, Thursday and Friday. I knew it was coming up.
Sure. Um, so I think this is all really exciting and it was a fun process to be a part of. Thank you Stacy and thank you Andy. Um, yeah, and it was fun to work with all of you as well. So we need to see it all unfold and play out.
And what I would say, um, because uh Stacy and Andy and I had talked in terms of implementation. Um, and so at this point, we have a really good, strong team. And so um, because they put Smartsheet in place. And so staff are already used to that they have to submit their um uh updates to me. So it was weekly, now it's monthly. But we're constantly communicating with each other and constantly sharing information and collaborating with one another. And I think that because we've spent a whole year working on that and making sure that that's the type of relationship and team that we have, it makes this a lot easier. Um, had we not had that, I probably would have said we might need to rely on Citygate a little bit more to kind of help us get through and get, get a system in place. Um, at this point, I would say let's just, you know, go through this the way that I'm recommending. If we start hitting some roadblocks or I can't try, can't, we just can't quite figure out um how to get from point A to point B on some of these things, then maybe, you know, at that point I might come back and ask for, you know, you know, some additional assistance from CityGate. But at this point, I think we have a really good, strong collaborative team. Um, and everyone's excited for this. Uh, everyone participated in this. Everyone has something to say. Um, so all their voices were heard. So I think that there's a lot of buy-in.
It was interesting looking at the employee, stuff when you actually see it in front of you. And there's probably like two employees who were consistent in their answers all the way down the thing. So you know, there's definitely some trends and things to look at to go back and go, okay, so who, maybe we need to go figure out what we can do to rectify some, some issues there. Um, but overall, I mean, I love, this process is great. I mean, there's so much meat and potatoes into these lists of things that we're tackling throughout the next couple of years. So um, it's great that it's organized and it's, you know, I don't mind revisiting that to help upload your uh tasks for 2526 to some other time to be here or anything to do here. Just move them up.
Yeah.
But no, it was, it was, it was good. It was a little painful, the all-day meeting, but it was good. It's good. We got a lot done.
Um, and even, you know, we've, we've been doing a lot of different things with employees. Um, we do um, a five monthly employee newsletter. So we send that out, wish them happy birthday, embarrass them because it's their birthday. Um, or because they, they won the ugly sweater contest. Um, and then, you know, we did the employee appreciation. Um, you know, we, we, so we try to do things that are fun for staff and keep them involved and motivated. Um, little things like the SDI, um, that's, that's huge. I mean, that's a, it really doesn't cost us anything. Um, but it's a huge benefit to them. And the fact that I approached them as opposed to them approaching me, those are, those are big wins because they, I think they identify that we're trying to do what's in their best interest. We're trying to make things better for them. So it's, I think it's.
And the transparency. They were, they were working in a vacuum at some point, you know, and, and when you don't know what the goals are, what, what we're trying to achieve here, what's our vision and mission, then they're not going to know and or have pride or, you know, know that like we're succeeding, we're working towards those goals or we've, we've met some goals. And so I think the transparency is big and I don't think they had that before. And they, you know, just, yeah, so that's helpful.
Yeah. Um, and I do, I do really try to listen to staff. So if, if they're, you know, I said, don't, the answer's no unless you ask. So, you know, if you're struggling with something, you know, just reach, you know, talk to your, talk to your supervisor, talk to your manager, um, or you can always come and talk to us. And um, and then I, same thing with department heads. It's no unless you ask. So I mean, if you've been told no a million times, ask a million first. Cause it might be yes this year.
I think um, for the public, you know, I'm sure you're going to maybe once we get this on the website, are, are you planning on doing any press release on that or doing something to, for the newspaper to cover or?
Yeah.
Getting it on Facebook? I just, there's still, because when, again, when you read our citizens input, you know, they have no idea about some of the steps that we're working towards. Exactly. They didn't know that there was a plan that existed and frankly, there wasn't really one in some of these areas. So um.
Well, I think that that was clear in the 4 and 49 discussion we went to. Um, there, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a void.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of information. And so I think it's going to be important to have this information out there so that they can see, um, you know, areas that we are working on. Um, we can't always, you know, get into the weeds on things. Um, but definitely there's progress in a lot of different areas in here. So um, and they just need to be aware of that. And that's it. And I just want to um also thank uh Stacy and Andy for all of your help in this. And um, and I'm super excited. And I'm very excited to have been part of this.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. We really, really enjoyed working with all of you and, and this process. So feel free Rebecca to get back to us with whatever we just told you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Take care.
Happy to do. All right. There's no members of the public online. So this would be an opportunity for public comment. Nate, how do you feel about this?
Do, do, do.
Do you got a thumbs up for the record? Any uh, any other comments or nobody online at all, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to say? We'll be looking for um a motion to approve resolution 2317, which is adopting of the strategic.
Don't make the motion.
I'll take it.
Look at council vice mayor Von Katta and council member Sharada. Um, on favor?
Aye.
Any a vote? Okay, it looks like a 401. And then we will be moving on to item 7A, which is a monthly treasures report. This is for discussion and Michelle, if you can lead us out.
So um, this is our monthly treasures report for the month of January. Um, listing all of our um bank accounts, um investments, money markets. So on this report, I'm showing you your, our beginning balances of beginning of January, the ending balances and then breaking out any type of accrued interest, bank fees, um, and, and what percentage of the whole. So one thing I wanted to point out, um, Vane Stockton has been a wonderful partner since we approved over to them. And Dari has been wonderful with branch managers to really try to um get the most and earn our account there. And she came to us um at end of November, beginning of December and knew we were really busy with um, you know, activities that were going on, especially it was close around the storm time. Um, and she's like, hey, I talked to my CFO. I'm able to move your checking account into a 2% interest account. Um, and let's see what we can do from there. And in the month of January, we earned $7,000 worth of interest on that.
Real money.
Real money.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've never done.
We've never earned anything.
Twenty four thousand on our old bank account from US banks.
Service charges.
Yeah, all the service charges and everything. So um, so that has been wonderful. She wants to earn more of our business. So we're still talking with her and looking at moving some of these other accounts over to her.
That's great.
Um, right now, um, Lake, we have the most of our money invested. They'd like to earn a good portion of all of that money, but we're still in negotiations with them. Right now they're talking 3% for all of our money, but Lake just jumped up from 2% up to um 2.6%. We want to watch it and see what it's doing. Rebecca and I have been watching both shows mostly and having discussions. Um, but we definitely have a great partner in Vane Stockton. Um, and that number of interest that you see for Lake, that's a quarter, that's a full quarter. So they deposit into the account in January for the prior quarter. Um, and so that's what we were earning at the quarter end.
Um, so compared that to a year ago, I think it was point two, 2.3% in Lake, that's what we were earning. And so now we are 2.63. So um, I was extremely conservative with interest revenue um in this budget because it was really bad.
Well, it was really bad. It did go up all over.
Yeah. Um, but Lake specifically has been taking a nosedive for the last three years. And so we watched it go from like 4% down to 0.23. So um, then now it's come back up. We'll just have to continue to watch it in terms of if it makes sense to pull any portion of that uh over to Vane of Stockton or leave it with Lake. Um, so Lake basically is the state um pool. So it's, it's, it's about as secure as you can, you know, get. Um, but you don't, you don't make much uh money. You just, it just kind of sits in there. Um, the other thing that we'll want to contemplate is the um, right now, we're just kind of focused on yields, just in terms of interest revenue. We have no ability to grow assets in this type of portfolio. So um, that may be something that we want to look at. Um, we used Chandler um at CCWD. We also use Chandler at Calhoun County. Chandler um is an active asset manager. Um, they use, they do a lot of uh local governments. And so we would, you know, at some point I would probably recommend looking at something like that and doing um a uh, a request for proposals or a request for qualifications um in terms of looking at that. That's the only way if you have an active portfolio manager to actually grow your assets. Um, otherwise you, you get interest income, so you get your yield, but you're never going to grow your assets. Um, and these are, these are all pretty liquid for the most part. And um, and still secure. Um, but uh we may want to look at um having a longer term. We still have limited. We still have limitations on how long our duration can be because we're government. But definitely, it would be longer term than what we currently have, which is like, yeah, a day, two days. Can I ask, maybe I'm missing the vote. The checking at US Bank, we hesitate that because we have to finish like what's there. So we have outstanding payments still coming out of there. So once that's all done, and we've swapped all of our kind of accounts that are just-
That's not payable anymore.
No.
And, and with PayRock, which is part of the I work program where we're, we won't have the fees, the credit card fees, that, we filled out all the applications, we're just waiting for everything to transition over. That'll be another piece. We didn't change that-
But it'll automate the-
Because the credit cards still go over for bank, our US bank, once that happens. So we're hoping in like, by March 31st, we can have that account completely closed out. All those things need to-
It just takes a lot of time, doesn't it?
Yes, and then we have a lot of electronic payments from the government going into there. And so we've been researching them, finding out the forms, getting them switched over to the new bank.
It's a big process.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, so that will go away.
So by code, you're supposed to get a treasury report every month. And so you will be getting one every month. So going forward, you will be getting a, so probably what Linda joined will say, you know, January 31st ending balance, so same as she does here, but then you can kind of have a look back every, every month that you get it. And then this is not, you know, we're really just putting a portfolio transaction. So that's why we're not saying, well, here's how much we spent, you know, in accounts payable. That all comes on your, your other report, right, each report. This is really just, you know, kind of exposure to the treasury overall.
Looks good. I like that. Thank you.
And normally, we would just put this on consent because-
Yes.
I was just going, consent. We just did it non-consent, so we got it.
Right, right, yeah. Very well done. Thank you. It was easy to understand.
Good job. I love shirts and ties and things. The other, just one more thing on this, just because I have this review, other agency report. Just because it says we have 25 million dollars here, that doesn't mean let's go spend 25 million. It's already-
What do you mean?
It's already in the budget. That was a very difficult thing to get people's minds around. So do you appreciate this category? It's what? It is, but it was much of it. Part of it was required. Yeah, yeah. Some of it is, yeah. That's great. For interrupting some of this electricity. Yeah.
Any public comment? Nate or? Two thumbs up for Nate for the record. Previous, previous public comment was just one.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna say, the transparency report, you're gonna see the bank fees were paid, you're gonna see the interest were earned, and that was important for me. That part, you had to look.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you. Yeah, well, we kind of played with a bit of shock. Right, that's great. You know, the, the public deserves to see that, too.
Right.
He's a very tactile person. If you wanna know where the, you know, what's happening, this is what's happening.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks again. Anybody else have any final final? We can move on to item 7B, which is to approve Resolution 2325. This is the UWPA Assistance Agreement between City of Angels and UCA Water and Power Authority. Rebecca.
So this is something that Joel and I have talked about. He has one of these with, between CCWP and UCA Water and Power Authority. And he wanted to talk to us about doing something similar with the City of Angels and UPUD. And it, it's, it's a good idea, just because it doesn't make a ton of sense, like especially when you're talking about equipment that you don't need very often. And like, let's say there's some sort of, in the word of the state, some who happens, or some sort of kind of like very specific period of time that you need that piece of equipment. It makes no sense for us to go and buy that piece of equipment when we only need to use it once or twice. Same thing goes for Utica, same thing goes for UPUD. So if one of us needs it all the time, it makes sense for them, you know, to have it or for us to have it, but it doesn't make sense for all three of us to have it. And so the other thing is, if we ever have an emergency where we can utilize each other's equipment, utilize each other's staff, this is how we do it. Because you need to kind of define who is on person, what's on second. Who is responsible for this versus who is responsible for that. And then also having this here, especially in terms of emergencies, where we would have to provide emergency type control aid. Reimbursements, let's say it becomes a state declared emergency or a federal declared emergency, those mutual assistance activities are not reimbursable through the grant unless you have an agreement in place before you. So there's multiple reasons why these are a good idea. But for the, for the three of us within the GPA, there's even more reasons why it's a good idea. Because, you know, if, 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 you know, like, I think of like the masticator. You know, if we can use the masticator for, from UWPA, then we don't necessarily need to buy a masticator. If, you know, we have a particular piece of equipment that we use all the time, it doesn't necessarily make sense for Utica to also have that same piece of equipment. And that's a benefit to the GPA, because if they had to buy it, we still have to pay 50% of it. So if we already have the piece of equipment and they can borrow it under these terms, then we don't have to pay 50% for them to also have a duplicated piece of equipment. That's nice. So that's what this is. Legal reviewed it. We kind of went back and forth in terms of cleaning up some language and ensuring who is responsible for workers' comp. It's always the employee employing agency. So if it's our staff, we are, if it's their staff, they are. You can't transpose that liability because we're operating that. And so they looked at it, we looked at it, went back and forth, and this is the draft that we're recommending.
So compensation is the liability of the employer, but what about liability of that equipment as it's operating on that task, that duty?
We're using, like, if the, if the equipment was damaged-
Or if it knocked out a power line or it caused property damage or something, or-
We're, we would be responsible if we're operating it.
If we, it goes to the operator and, okay.
If they're operating it, we're responsible.
So if it's our masticator and another agency UPUD is using it, it's, we're sending our, our operator with it?
No.
So we need to make sure that they're trained?
They have to be trained.
Easily to operate our equipment?
No. Uh, yes. So on the masticator, we won't even use it until our staff are trained to use the masticator. Because otherwise, we would have to pay for their staff and their masticator. So in order for us to use their masticator, our staff have to be trained on how to use their masticator. Then we can use their equipment. Vice versa, if we have a piece of equipment, they have to be trained on our piece of equipment or operate it.
So we will never be sending one of our people to-
I wouldn't say never. There could be an instance, I mean, like, we don't have any staff that can run a hydro plant. But there certainly can be times if they had some sort of emergency in terms of the water conveyance portion of their system, that our staff could be of assistance. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is, especially with all the emergencies and the storms that we just got through and-
Storms coming.
Getting ready, yeah. This is important because it, it puts it into place it's available for all of you. So I don't have any comments, but I've already been aware of it. You guys have any other things to say? Okay, Nate, any members of the public? How many hands you got?
It's a good thing.
Huh?
It's a good thing.
With two thumbs up or a foot?
Two thumbs up.
Two thumbs up and a good thing. Okay. Sam loves it. Okay, do we have anybody? We don't even have anyone.
No.
We're not gonna look out there and ask anymore.
I think they're all left, yeah.
Everybody's in the movie.
Yeah.
I'll make it, but it's just for-
A motion, and do we have a second? I'll second, I'll go on record.
And it's approval of the agreement, Resolution 2325.
Correct.
Yep.
So vote, the agreement and 2325, right? And so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so 401.
Well, maybe I'll leave early for that.
Absolutely. Be great. Okay.
So, item eight. I didn't see a difference. Um, okay, so I don't know if people heard, but I think they're, we're gonna have some low snow.
What?
I have heard that. So it's like, yeah.
What's that, what's that? There was these ones I know that they can't afford to go.
People aren't prepared.
Not snowing. So all the kids call it a no, no, no.
So, so the staff, our public works staff were very busy today propping. So they were making sure like their saws are ready. We just assumed between, it's just about a combination. You've got heavy snow and you have high winds. So whatever trees didn't go down in the storms that just went through, they may, if they're teetering, come down on this one. So they've got their saws and all of the equipment ready to go. We have snow plow on standby. So that, that will be that. The one thing public should be aware of, we only plow our roads. So we don't, we don't do any private roads or private driveways or anything like that. And again, it's gonna just kind of be on a case-by-case basis where we, where we can do it. Okay. I spent half the day down in San Andreas this morning, the applicant briefing for the winter storm disaster. They went over the submission deadlines and various mitigation grants. Utica was also there in attendance. They did reach out to Joel ahead of time just to make sure he had someone there. And, and we are, we have a, in order to apply for a lot of these hazard mitigation grants, you have to either have your own hazard mitigation plan, or you have to have a cooperative hazard mitigation plan, which we have a cooperative hazard mitigation plan. So the city's in it, the county's in it, Utica's in it, I think most of the utility districts are in it. And are all the fire districts in it, too?
Yes, I'm in the county.
Okay, so we're all kind of in it. So that's there, and so it, it's kind of, you can either shop from the projects that are on there in terms of hazard mitigation projects that are on there that have already been identified, because you're not limited to that. So we did identify some hazards that we would like to mitigate during, you know, that we identified during this winter storm. I did meet with FEMA, and they actually got their hazard mitigation team in touch with me. So I had a nice lengthy conversation, going over some ideas on some projects that were in the mitigation plan and also ones that were not. So we can make sure that they align with the correct funding. And then I also talked to Grassmason from Utica this morning, where we were leaving on some ideas that they might have for some mitigation. Even though Utica, we're all the GPA, Utica would be applicants on anything that, that involves their section. And I don't know if you all have heard about this one, but our canine handler, Jody McDermott, I am for canine, assisted with an arrest with the Calhoun County Sheriff's Department. And there is some legislation on the floor right now about limiting canine use. And I just think that that would just be really bad. Rural agencies use canine for a lot. And canine programs are much cheaper than a whole nother person. And they also mitigate liability in terms of injuries on the job and, and all of that good stuff. So I, I hope that, you know, there's a lot more advocacy for the canine program. We rely on that canine program quite significantly, so does the Calhoun County Sheriff's Department, so do lots of law enforcement agencies. And this was a perfect example of why canine program, it's so important. So it, it was a, it wasn't an easy arrest. But the canines and the handler and the deputies had a great job to ensure that they all remain safe and it limited injury to the staff. So hopefully, yeah. And what else? Just working with staff, working on our budget schedule, which is right around the quarter. So we will be putting all that information together, continuing to work on the I work solution. So we are getting pretty close to being done with the business license component of it. We're really close to the building and planning permit portion of it. I've also been working with Chris O'Flynn on the work management portion of it. So once those pieces start coming to play, we'll be able to put it on our portal. So, so the public will be able to initiate that. It's pretty nice, you can be in the field and actually like pull up the map and put the dot exactly where the issue is, and you can create a work order in the field just from that, staff can. I'm working with the county to figure out a way that we can get regular updates on parcel information. So I need to work on that solution a little bit more. And like we said, Spring Break, we're working with them in order to get some- Oh, yeah. On business reviews. And then we have finally gotten a schedule for PG&E to come and connect the generator behind City Hall. In order to do that, they have to put up a new pole, and they have to take everything off the old pole, and actually chop the old pole down to some degree, and then put everything on the new pole. Comcast is gonna have to change their drop because it's on the old pole, has to go to the new pole. And with everything that's gonna be happening, we will be without power at City Hall for the entire day of March 10. So we will be sending out information via Facebook, we'll put it on our website, we'll have a sign on our door, but we will be completely without power for the entire day. The PD is on their own connection, so they will have power. But our fuel, fueling station will not have power, so we told staff, you need to fill up ahead of time. Now just plan, plan ahead. And then we'll just recommend to the public, just plan ahead, because we will be spending time filing in the darkroom for planning the story, around kind of doing things that we don't need a computer for. You can come down here and work with these folks. We can put this work. Big job, thanks. Um, so yeah, lots, lots going on, and- That's it, is that everything? Yeah. That's that? Have any questions or comments?
No public? Moving on to item number nine, council report.
I have nothing to report, and Wednesday, not Wednesday, yeah, right, next Wednesday is hub?
Yes, the first.
Yeah.
So I'll have something to report then.
I have nothing to report from the last two weeks, although this week I do have UWPA tomorrow night. And something else. I mean, I attended some, I went to the crab feed, the AM crab feed, which others were there. And then I did have a Friends Affair meeting last week, which is ramping up for fair, which there's a lot of new fun things happening, and it's gonna be a good fair. There's also a Celtic event coming up, that Friends Affair is the, the server, the alcohol- the alcohol server at. So lots coming up in the next, for, yeah, in the next couple of months. So that's it for me.
I had the Central Sierra Economic Development District meeting. Ben Stopper is now our new chair for that. We talked about the FEMA for all the counties, like everybody who was able to turn something in on that. And then the, there was an update on the Community Economic Resilience Fund, the SURF. And the update is that we have not received a contract from EDD yet. Still waiting on that, so hopefully that's coming in at any time. We got an update on the Eastern Sierra K through 16 planning grant, the Arches. And the update on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Project is set. So, and then the next meeting for that's not until the 18th. I was at the crab feed also.
Okay, like to the all hazards meeting on February 14th. It's via Zoom, which is nice. That's one thought. And yeah, I was totally lost and I have no idea. So I'm gonna have to like read about something because I don't think I was doing much. I had no idea. They talked about all sorts of stuff and I, being my first meeting, I had. Yeah. Really didn't understand.
I think mainly it was kind of just like a.
They tabled a lot of stuff.
A lot of stuff was tabled. They needed to get some additional information. So I think for the most part, it was just kind of.
Formations.
Yeah. Yeah. Make sure they're looking in the right areas for what they need. Yeah. That was it.
Okay. No comments from anybody on those. We'll move on to number 10, which is correspondence. We do have the news and notes for the month of January. Anybody need to question any of that? Duly noted. 11, calendar rose.
So you mentioned your UWPA meeting tomorrow.
It did get rejected, yeah, so it's tomorrow instead.
Fog on the first, museum on the second. So I'm gonna be out of town.
For the museum?
Yeah. So I don't know if anybody wants to go.
Who's the alternate? Do you have an alternate?
Is that me?
I think it is.
It is you. Yeah. So on the second.
Mark's second.
Question 10. In person.
It's like a Thursday?
Is it Thursday? Okay.
So and then the 14th is, I have the all hazards again. And then the 15th is Chris for the IR.
I can send a report. The museum's open. She can't make it, I can send a report.
Okay.
Two hours.
Oh.
Yeah, I can't tell her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean. It's, oh, the center report.
Yeah. I got the TV.
Item number 12, adjournment.
Yes, I can.
Ryan and Isabel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good evening. Thank you, guys.